All right, well, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And if you could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call a roll, please?
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, our next items is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a sign up sheet here, but nobody has currently signed up. That doesn't preclude you from rushing to the podium and using this time now if you'd like to. I see no one rushing forward, so, all right, we will move on from public items then. Next item is consent agenda. All items under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council, may be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items unless a council member's request, in which case that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. Considering we only have one item on the consent agenda, does anybody want to discuss it, or I will entertain a motion? Okay, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agenda item number one.
Okay, we have a motion. Let's see, second, Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, actually, the next item is the mayor's report, and I actually have a couple of things, even though it might look empty on your agenda item here. But one of them is that I am pleased to announce that the Merriam has received three awards, to my right or to your left out there as you're looking at it, for, it's called the Savvy Award. And anyway, Team Merriam's Communications and Tourism Team took home three first place Savvy Awards at the City-County Communications and Marketing Association, three CMA Annual Conference in Portland this month. So the Savvy Awards recognizes outstanding local government achievements in communications, public sector marketing, and resident government relationships. Merriam won the Savvy in Photography Single Image Category, Printed Publication Guides category for the visitor's guide, and Printed Publication External Publications category for highlights. Jenna, Lauren, and Karen worked hard on these awards to make it possible, and we appreciate their efforts in helping Merriam look good and to be recognized, not just locally, but throughout the nation, so. Now, we're all more savvy about those awards. Okay, never mind. Okay. It's hard to get jokes out, nobody laughs at these things, okay. It's all right, though, I'm good, I'm good. Crickets over there from the city administrator. Okay, the next thing I just want to talk about was the, our Go Green event, the environmental event that we co-sponsored with, it was actually Merriam, Mission, Fairway, Roland Park, Prairie Village, Mission Hills, Mission Woods, Westwood, and Westward Hills. That occurred over, I guess it was last Saturday, if I'm correct. And several people, we had actually 25 volunteers. Five of them were Merriam City Council and staff that were over there helping to put this thing on or attending. And we had approximately 500 attendees. So there were 47 exhibitors, so that was pretty impressive. And anyway, we had great feedback, they had free bags and everything over there. Actually, if you had been there, and you might still be able to get one, I got a Ripple free bag to carry my glass down, which, if you don't know, we have a Ripple container right down here at IKEA. That's, I've seen it driving by. I'm going to actually start using that thing now, so, there you go. So at least it benefited me to go over there and attend that event and learn about a lot of things we can be doing environmentally to help our community and our country and the world, so. Next year, I assume we'll probably be doing it again, and hopefully, everybody gets a chance to go there and attend, so, look forward to that. And thank you for our staff that helped put that on as well. Okay, taking care of those, that was my mayor's report. Moving on to council items. Looks like the first item up for business is the overview of the Merriam Hotel Grant Proposal. Looks like we moved on to this, thank you.
All right.
Do not pay any attention to the blue screen over there.
We are getting there, and here we are.
Over on the north side here.
All right, well, mayor and council, my name's Jennifer Jones-Lacey, I'm the Assistant City Administrator, and I'm going to go over this hotel grant proposal that staff is looking at as a way to sort of enhance our hotel corridor. Little background, we have four hotels. They were built between 1982 and 1988. There are 424 rooms total. We have transient guest tax that is generated from that, 7% on all of our hotels, and also any Airbnbs or transient merchants that we have, or, I'm sorry, short-term rentals. It supports the Visitors Bureau and economic development, special events such as Turkey Creek Festival, car show, et cetera, farmer's market, and it also supports 3.32 FTEs. I wanted to provide just a little bit of crime data on this because I feel like this provides a little context for why we're coming to you tonight with this request. Police calls for service in 2021 represented 5% of all non-traffic calls for these four hotels, and that actually reflects a 57% increase from 2015. And since then, 64% of all police calls from hotels have in fact been from extended stay, which they are the unfortunate winners of that very sad prize. And this is a current image of all of our hotels that we have that our Visitors Bureau Director just took the other day. So this is an illustration of that. You can see, obviously, extended stay is the significant outlier here. And again, this is just to provide a little context, and followed by that, you have the other two hotels that are right in the same vicinity, Quality Inn and Drury slash Lotus, which is now Lotus. And then Hampton is on the other side of the highway, so they're somewhat insulated from any sort of activity that happens in that particular corridor. To give you some information on transient guest tax numbers, our annual revenue has declined by 24% from its seven-year high in 2017 to 2021. There was a hotel that did close in 2017, at the end of 2017, and that was the former Quality Inn, which was, had 88 rooms, and the current Quality Inn used to be a super eight. The average daily room rate in 2017 was $75.24, and that has declined just in sheer numbers by 5% in 2021 to $71.55. And if you account for inflation, that room rate, if it were to consistently go up with inflation, it should be somewhere around $96.50. And so that's actually, if you factor that in, it's a 26% decline. The total hotel industry revenue in Merriam in 2017 was 8.8 million, and in 2017, it was down to 7.3. So that's a 17% decline in revenue. And this is a, just a graphical representation of the fund balance. We feel like fund balance is a really good illustration of kind of what you're working with here because it takes into account, of course, expenses and revenues. And the yellow line indicates what our projections show. And as Donna often says, you know, our projections are always very conservative. So will this actually come to fruition that the fund balances will be that low? Probably not, but the point is, is that we are projecting, you know, continued negative downswing in these figures. The goals for this program are to enhance the aesthetics and amenities for each property. We want to increase that average daily room rate in an effort to hopefully attract, you know, quality visitors to these rooms, also help to decrease blight and vagrancy at the hotels, and then increase our sales tax and transient guest tax revenue generated by those hotels. Funding requirements for this grant, we are proposing it be a match of 50%, so the hoteliers would be required to contribute 50% of whatever the total capital improvement is. And then that would have a minimum investment of $10,000, so reimbursement from the city would be between $5,000 and $250,000 per hotel, and that's max. And it would in fact be reimbursement, so they wouldn't receive anything from us until they completed those improvements and they were fully inspected and vetted. And of course, they must be current on all taxes, business licenses, and be fully code compliant. Some of the allowable expenses that we looked at, and to give you a little background, the city administrator, the Visitors Bureau Director, and myself met with, we invited all of the hotels to come to a meeting to find out what their needs were. And so what you see here is basically a compilation of what they really needed and what they would requested, along with what staff felt would provide the greatest aesthetic improvement to our community and to those hotels. So exterior improvements would include facade improvements, paint, lighting upgrades, door and window efficiency improvements, outdoor gathering area landscape and signage, lobby improvements, guest amenities, so that could be food and beverage, area improvements or additions, swimming pool improvements, exterior improvements, technology for guests, room renovations, so modern upgrades to carpeting, furnishings, bathrooms, et cetera. And these are things, you know, and when looking at this, we also kind of thought about what actually generates higher room rates, and a lot of this was informed by both our Visitors Bureau Director, who's been in this industry for about 20 years, and our hotel owners. Another thing that we also looked at is energy efficiency, because that, of course, is a council goal, so we wanted to try to speak to that too and encourage those types of improvements. Other restrictions that would be required, so, property owner, whenever they submitted this grant application, they would have to provide proof of the flagship and brand's property improvement plan, so that's like their capital improvement plan, with their application and include any brand transition plans. And we say that because we know that Lotus is hoping to transition to a Fairfield by Marriott, and so they may not be the only ones, we would want that information. We would put in place clawback provisions if the owner sells or if the flagship downgrades within two years of receiving these funds. And then hotels would be required to provide benchmark data, such as that average daily room rate and occupancy info for one year preceding and two years post-receival of the grant. This is information that they keep very close to the vest, so if we were to present it, we would do it in aggregate so that it's not releasing any trade secrets, but we need to know in order to know if this is effective or not. And then all improvements must meet Merriam codes, and the applicant will have to be responsible for all permits and fees associated. We are proposing to make up to $1 million available for this program in one-time resources, and this, these funds would come from a transfer from the general fund to the transient guest fund, and we are proposing that we do that by way of reducing the amount, the million dollars transferred to the capital improvement fund, because we plan to use ARPA funds to pay for some of those capital improvement projects. So it's essentially just using the money that would have transferred already to a different fund and moving it into the transient guest fund. So this program would begin in 2023. Applications would be submitted online and reviewed by myself, the Visitors Bureau Director, and the city administrator. We would meet with each hotel to answer any questions that they have or discuss their application, since we only have four, easy to do. Once the grant is approved, work would be completed with receipts prior, submitted prior to those reimbursements, and then the project would terminate once all the funds are depleted. And we are, we would require that the work would be done within a year of grant approval, unless there's some other special conditions that we allow or it's a larger project. And we would require before and after photos as part of this program, and we would do a post-program inspection as well. And then also, their application would have to accompany quotes of the work or estimates. And that is all I have. Can I answer any questions?
Good question. Will you transfer over the full million or just whatever it is? If we have $800,000 that is requested, that's what we're transferring?
Right, yeah, it would be equivalent.
And is there a timeline from when they have to make that submittal before we cut off and say, you're not getting it or not? I mean, could they, I guess my question is, is could they come in in November of next year and say, we would like to do this?
We plan to offer it as long as the funds are available. So once the million dollars is done or the council decides, and we would hope to do it all in 2023 because that's when it would be appropriated essentially, but if the council decides, hey, we're done with this, we've issued $500,000 in grants and we don't want to continue this, then we would, they would cut it off for, say, the next year. But the idea is that we would provide that funding until that million dollars is used. Now, we only have those four hotels. We are requiring, you know, a max of, for each hotel, a max amount. And there's, of course, questions as to whether or not all of them will take advantage of that. And so if they don't, and we have had one hotel that hasn't been super responsive, then they just may not take advantage of it, and we would just say, sorry, you know, you never applied. But we can kind of work out those details if we want to have an application cutoff or something like that as part of this program.
Mr. Neil.
I have a couple of questions. You just mentioned that one of the hotels wasn't, doesn't seem to be that interested at this point. But I was also looking back, obviously, there's, you know, the issues with police response to the hotels sort of center around one of the four, which is a different marketplace than the other three, I guess. Do we know, first of all, if that hotel's interested? And is, are they going to stay an extended stay type of hotel, most likely? Or it seems like the type of facility constitutes a sort of a, you know, a possible different type of, they're almost like residents, you know, in some cases. How much, how many, do we know what percentage are long-term, you know, folks that are staying there for long-term versus people that are staying there for like one or two nights or a few days?
Sure, yeah, we don't have that data specifically because, as I had mentioned, they're really tight vested. They hold that stuff tight to the vest, they don't give us those details. Now, what you might notice is transient guest tax rates declining in a specific area significantly. I haven't personally witnessed that, I haven't analyzed that data. We can kind of look and see if we can find any trends that indicate that. But we have, that is, in fact, the hotel that we have had a tough time getting to come to the table. We have these twice-annual meetings with the hotels, and since I've been here, which is not that long, they have not come to those meetings. So they have a decent amount of turnover, which is tough. So we are going to try to, we'll continue to reach out to them as much as possible, but like I said, with the turnover that they experience, sometimes it's hard to pin down.
When you say turnover, is that ownership?
Management, specifically, because at the corporate level, you know, that's extended stay, and then they have local managers.
Well, is that a franchise?
Yeah, they're a franchisee.
Right, so there is some management or some ownership group that owns it? Have we reached out to the ownership group?
Yes, I believe that Karen Crane has all the, has that contact information, but it just, she hasn't gotten a lot of, a lot of response.
We met with them last year and a half ago with the police department to have conversations about some of these similar facts and data groups. So they are available there when need be.
I guess what I'm asking is, you know, I recognize the benefit in, you know, spending a million dollars to upgrade our hotel stock, but if we continue to have one hotel that is not participating and is not, and is also one of the bigger contributors of some of the, some of the issues that we're hoping to resolve in our objectives, what can we do to sort of, is there anything we can do to try to make sure that that million dollars is as effective as possible? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking. And also, the other question, which was the, when you were talking about the revenue drop from 2017 on, was the 2017 you mentioned was, that was the time that the other hotel that's currently where the Audi dealership is ceased operations? So does that, did that take out their numbers, so apples to apples, or is that just include?
It actually includes that, but yes, they left in November of 2017. So this is, everything post-2017 indicates
Still downward trend.
The four hotels versus the five, yes. And another thing to take into consideration is the fact that, of course, we are developing Kmart, and that is going to be a very nice communal space with nice apartments, Class A apartments, something we don't have. Also, Wolf's just did a significant upgrade, and, you know, the idea is if you can get as many of those businesses to invest in their operations and in their facilities as possible, hopefully, it will elevate the status of that entire corridor. So, you know, we can't make any promises that a private business would participate. Of course, staff will do everything we can, and I know police has had, have had in the past some successful conversations with them, and I think at one point, there was some relief in that area on crime, but it just ends up ebbing and flowing a little bit.
What was the nature of the types of calls that, you know, I'm sure it varies quite a bit, but if you could put a sort of thumbnail to it, I'd sure appreciate it, you know, because I don't know that much about problems that you have at hotels, especially extended stay hotels.
Well, Darren McGlaughlin, police chief. So let's put it in some perspective with extended stay and the other hotels. The types of calls you're getting in extended stay are not necessarily different than most of the types of calls you're getting at the other hotels. You're just getting a lot more of them. So whereas you always have your level of property crimes, burglaries, autos, stolen cars, that's because there's a high concentration of automobiles, like apartment complexes, people like to go steal, Cadillac converters. We get those across the board, all the hotels, we just get more there. Where we probably get more calls at extended stay as opposed to the other hotels, we get a lot more disturbance calls, we get a lot more mental health calls, we get a lot more drug-related calls, although it's not to say we don't get drug-related calls at the other hotels, we just get more. So we're just, it's more of a, it operates more like an apartment complex that has a lot of problem residents in it as opposed to a hotel. So, you know, it's, it's, let's not bring in any different types of crimes, it's just bringing more concentration of it to that one location.
Right, yeah, I mean, my experience with that type of property with, when I had a construction company, there were, that was kind of a place where some folks that had, you know, people that had issues with substance abuse and somehow ended up in those kind of places more frequently than other places. And obviously, it's something that you see, and I'm just curious if we had some similar kinds of problems there. It would be nice to, obviously, figure out a solution to all that that took care of all the people who are impacted, so. But I don't, I don't have the answer either, so, just curious.
Okay, so some other hands over here, Mr. Caldol, go ahead.
Yeah, I have the million-dollar question. The funding for this becomes available because we'll be using COVID relief funds in some of our CIP projects. What's our level of confidence that that's really going to happen?
That the
That million dollars will become available because we're using COVID funds for the other CIP projects? Is that, are we, I guess, 100% confident that we can use the COVID relief funds for those projects?
Yes, as far as our ability to use those funds, we are 100% confident that we can use it as purpose because ultimately, the city suffered revenue loss during that time, and as a result, we are quite flexible in our ability to use these funds for government purposes. And this is a, what we are doing is a government purpose.
Okay, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, a million dollars is a lot of money, but I see that there's a twofold benefit. These businesses improve their facility, which will allow them to increase their rate, which will ultimately tie into the taxes that the city receives. So this is probably a question for Donna, but do we know how long or have we kind of estimated how long we think it's going to take to basically see our investment returned back to us in taxes?
Yeah, it's a really tough question to ask, and I'm pretty sure Donna's not going to have a magic answer, so to spare her that need to come up here. But, yeah, ultimately, it's difficult to say. We hope that you see a pretty fast turnaround or improvement of those rates. But what we do know, and I didn't necessarily mention this earlier, is that this is an industry that was specifically called out by the federal government as one that has suffered as a result of COVID. And in our community, that is definitely true. It has received the most negative impact from the pandemic, from an economic perspective. And so on that note, it makes sense to sort of try to bolster this industry so that it can help support a lot of the things that make Merriam so great, all of our special events, our farmer's market, things that our citizens love and tell us over and over again on citizen satisfaction surveys, that this is why we are, you know, one of the top, you know, cities for the ETC survey in terms of satisfaction. And that is why we're really targeting this industry and hoping to continue a lot of what we're doing now by way of helping them with their aging properties and the fact that revenues have been down and they haven't been able to do these investments to the extent that they would like. And of course, as you can imagine, they were all super excited about this prospect when we talked about it. So, and they want us to do it all the time, of course, which, you know, it's like, we're not promising anything, so don't get too excited. But if we can provide this sort of assistance on a one-time basis, I mean, that's going to be significantly more than I would say any, I mean, city that I've researched. I've tried to find something similar anywhere in this, in the nation, honestly, and I haven't really seen anything that is doing what we're doing, not to say that it doesn't exist. I mean, sure, it was an exhaustive search, but I feel like it's pretty significant and will really, really help this industry and then, of course, help us in turn.
Other questions? Mr. Leahy, oh, no, this way, oh, okay, well, hang on, Mr. Neil, let me go with Ms. Hands first, as you've already spoke.
You named who the application approval process team is. During the actual renovations, all of the regular code permits and inspections and all of those things would go on. And then when someone says it's complete, that same group goes back in and says, yes, you really have done what you said you were going to do?
Yeah, we're going to, actually, we'll tap into Brian's team, of course, to make sure that those inspections are completed to satisfaction and also that what they indicated on the application that they were going to do was in fact done. We'll require those photos, and then we will physically go in to see those improvements, is the plan.
Mr. Neil.
Okay, I'll try to finish up quickly. I got two more questions. One is about the funding. Bruce's question sort of triggered a thought that I'd had earlier. I assume that since I assume that since we're essentially taking money that we're getting for the CIP projects, we would get those anyway, that, that dollars anyway. So if we didn't do this, I'm just being the devil's advocate here. If we didn't do this, then that million dollars would go into another fund of some sort. Most likely it would, it would have to go somewhere. And this is a, you know, a one-time source of funding. So obviously a project like this, you know, makes, makes a certain amount of sense. But it could, the, the funding could also go towards, say, additional stormwater or Upper Turkey Creek funding. If we end up being short in our piece, is that not also another way to look at it, the, the funding?
Yeah, and of course, anytime that you, you invest in a program like this, there are trade-offs. And that is in fact a trade-off, absolutely. And, and the, the Upper Turkey Creek project is something that, you know, certainly could be covered by ARPA funds if we need additional revenue. But I know that that's still something that's being worked out. And, you know, that is ultimately your all's decision on kind of how you want to structure this. But we thought that considering this industry being as affected as it was, it made a lot of sense to, to try and at least propose this project or this grant project to move and move forward with that.
And, and I certainly agree with the, the idea. I'm just wanted to kind of make sure I understood the, the, the funding from the COVID fund. But also, this is back to the extended stay type of facility. Are there rules for the number of people that can occupy one of those units? And are, and is that something that we have and we enforce? And is that even a problem? Are the people, are the problems because they've got, you know, a whole bunch of people in a, in a single room or whatever? Or are there, you know, are we seeing that, you know, that, that the facility enforces some number of guests?
Sure, I mean, they do have occupancy requirements due to fire code, but if you have any insights, chief.
It's, it's not the quantity of people.
Okay.
It's not the issue.
All right, that's good enough. I just didn't know.
Okay, Mr. Dyer, go ahead.
What was the total amount of ARPA funds that Merriam is set to receive or has available to claim?
One point six eight million.
There any additional questions for Ms. Jones-Lacy? I see none. So my understanding is this is just information this evening?
Right, so this is just informational tonight. And then we hope to come back to you with a, you know, final proposal so that you can actually approve it. If you all want to see any changes to this, you can either let me know tonight and I can incorporate that into this program because obviously it's not fully complete until you all say it is. But if there are things that you want to incorporate, let us know. Or you can always email me or Chris and we can get that. See if we can integrate those in some way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Looks like our next item is consider adopting the downtown Merriam corridor plan. Looks like we got Mr. Dyer, Director Dyer coming to the podium.
City Mayor, Council Members, Brian Dyer, Community Board Director. I'm going to do a presentation on both of these following, both of the items two and three. So I'm going to do a presentation on the downtown Merriam corridor plan and then also on the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. Just going to do it all at one time. There we go. So as I mentioned, doing a presentation on the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan and the Downtown Merriam Corridor Plan. These are two plans we started a couple of years ago. Exciting that this is really kind of the final step in the planning process or the adoption process. Because the senior will be asking for you all to adopt these two plans as part of the design guidelines for the Merriam Corridor. Just a couple of things before we get started, I want to acknowledge and recognize some folks who helped us with this plan. Obviously, we have some advisory committees on both of these plans. Advisory committees are made up of residents, business owners, as well as you all. So just to let you all know, Mayor Pape, Council Member Silvers and Council Member Lehey served on both of the advisory committees for both of these plans. Then Council Member Stacy Chavetta, Chris Hands, David Neal and Whitney Yadrich served on the Downtown Merriam Corridor Plan Advisory Committee. Your Plan Chair, Brian Daley, has served on both of these committees. And Plan Commissioner Mitch Fowler also served on the Merriam Corridor Plan. And then former Council Member Scott Debold served on the Merriam Corridor Plan as well. So again, big representation of you all, a lot of folks, business owners and property owners on that. It was a great experience for both of these plans. So diving right into it, you all have in your packet, both those plans. They are quite large file size wise. I do not know why consultants make them so big, even though we asked them multiple times to make it smaller.
We don't pay them by the word.
It's all the pretty pictures.
Yeah, it, it's no by the megabyte. The megabyte, it isn't the word, it's the megabytes. So, so if folks want to access it, our communication team's done fantastic. We're putting together a webpage called Moving Merriam Forward. The link's there at the bottom, but the easier way to find it is go to our Merriam homepage. Scroll down just a little bit, it's on the right-hand corner down there. Click on that, that's going to take you to Merriam, Moving Merriam Forward page. That page is really awesome because it has some, all, all of our long-range plans and things like that on there. So you will find both these plans on that page if you ever need to find it and you don't want to go digging back through your packet. So a little bit of background on these two plans. They are funded from the local entities, did matching funds. And then also funded from Mid America Regional Council, Mark's Planning Sustainable Places Grants. Mark gets that funding from transportation funds they get from the federal government. So why I let you know that is because both these plans are really transportation oriented. So it's important we're kind of keeping in the back of your mind that these are what we say were design plans. These are pretty technical plans and they're not land use plans per se. They use the land uses that we already have in place through a variety of different plans out there. And so you may be wondering, well, why isn't I getting a recommendation from the Plan Commission for something like this? Well, it's because the land uses are already put in place. These plans just use, use those existing plans to create design. I will say that we think it's important that our Plan Commission, that your Plan Commission know about these plans. We'll be doing the same presentation to the Plan Commission at their next meeting. So again, as I mentioned, these are transportation oriented plans. They're looking at the ultimate best design for Merriam Drive and Lane. So all the way from Johnson Drive to Southwest Boulevard for all users, not just vehicles. So for pedestrians, bicycles, bicyclists, public transportation and things like that. So the downtown Merriam Plan goes from Johnson Drive to Fifty Third Street. Really covers the historical, the heart of downtown Merriam. And then the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan goes all the way, picks up Fifty Third Street and all the way to Southwest Boulevard. That plan was done in conjunction with and in partnership with Unified Government, Overland Park and Mission. And I will say that Unified Government, Kansas City, Kansas, Y and Dot, they have just recently adopted the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan. And Overland Park, they have a, have a, have a committee system. So this, their committee's already reviewed it and they are now starting to utilize and preparing to utilize that plan in other design aspects that I have going forward. I will bring that up to you again here when we go through the Merriam Connected Corridor Plan to let you know that Overland Park is already moving forward with it. Touched a little bit on the process. So both plans had advisory committees. Those committees really were, again, made up of residents, elected and appointed officials, businesses. Those are the folks who really guided the plan. One thing that was a little bit unique for the downtown Merriam Corridor Plan, we sent out letters and asked all the property owners and businesses along the corridor if they wanted to be on the steering committee. Got a great response. And so that committee really was kind of the committee that, the, the folks that if the advisory committee has some ideas and consultants, they would bounce those off of the steering committee, send out emails, say, hey, check this out, look at this webpage. And then also the steering committee was excellent because the consultants, Confluence utilized those folks for the one-on-one meetings. They picked out a lot of those folks to do one-on-one conversations with them about what their thoughts and ideas were for, for Merriam Drive. So a lot of documents and analysis went in this. You see everything, traffic analysis, economic studies, architectural rendering. So a lot of work was done by a lot of technical and intelligent people to come up with that. I do want to point out, as I mentioned earlier, we did utilize a lot of our existing plans. Couple of things I want to point out in here is first, Mobile Merriam. That's your pedestrian bike plan that you all adopted, accepted earlier this year. So that was fantastic to have that in place to be utilizing there. And then also Community for All Ages, as you all recall, we were a participant in that program. And it really, Community for All Ages is looking at, you know, how do we make the city good from everybody from one to ninety-one? And so we utilized both of those things kind of as, as the lens as we looked at the transportation facilities out there. How can these folks better utilize those facilities, water impediments to the folks using those facilities? So process, walking tours, workshops, committee meetings, open houses. Just let you know that there was a robust public outreach, had a lot of public input, a lot of public comment for it. Again, great process. We utilized both plans. The folks that are doing the corridor plan were very excited to see the new community center. So they were ecstatic to use that. Confluence, obviously, they were familiar with it. So it really worked out well having it over the community center, had a lot of positive responses to the facility there. So then timeline started in two thousand twenty-one, worked all the way through two thousand twenty-one, going at from two thousand twenty-two, and that brings us up to today. Again, get to the adoption and implementation part of these things. Plan elements, again, everything you kind of expect in the design plan, street cross-sections, Antioch Drive, Merriam Drive intersection, which I will cover here in just a second, which is a pretty interesting, exciting thing. Street escapes, entry features, flood game, flood plain mitigation. Lots of, lots of different, lots of, again, as I mentioned, technical aspects to it. I do want to mention though that as you dig into the downtown Merriam Plan, it does have a little bit, speak a little bit to land uses, kind of vaguely, but it does say, and I will quote on page thirty-seven, that the plan, this plan, the downtown plan recommends that the city investigate an overlay zoning or new downtown district zoning classification that would establish appropriate uses, designs, bulk requirements, setbacks, et cetera, for downtown Merriam. So again, it's kind of a recognition that as, as our downtown evolves, perhaps the city wants to take a closer look at what's the appropriate land uses for that area. So I'll dive into the Merriam Connected Plan. These next few, in fact, all the rest of the slides all come directly out of the plan. So if you, if you see these slides, you will know that they're also in the plan if you want to go find them. So Merriam Connected Corridor Plan, again, as I mentioned, Fifty Third Street to Southwest Boulevard. On the next slide I put up is, I think, an interesting slide. We had a lot of comments from folks about how busy Merriam Drive, how much traffic was along Merriam Drive. Well, there is traffic on there, but it is, it is not as busy as folks perceive. And this is a great example of it. So this is, in the red boxes are the daily traffic counts. So this is the average number of vehicles that go on this stretch of road in a twenty-four hour period. So the highest point of all of Merriam Drive, and this is really Fifty Third Street to Southwest Boulevard, so including downtown Merriam Drive, the highest number of traffic vehicles is nine thousand three hundred and eighty. Just to give you a little reference points, when you get to ten thousand vehicles, that's when folks go, that's when you have a really, really busy street. That's when you start getting over into the Shaw Mission Parkway's and Metcalf's. So that's a very, very busy street. So this whole corridor, again, as I mentioned, does take, have traffic, but perhaps not as busy as folks think it is. And that kind of fleet feeds into some of the improvements that were suggested for it that I'll go over in just a second. Another great infographic page that came out of that plan, I, I really like this for a lot of reasons, but probably the neatest thing that I always find interesting is this pie chart here. This is just showing the age distribution through the, through the corridor area. And it's just incredible how evenly it is distributed through there. It's really have all age groups well represented in the corridor. So this gets into probably the nuts and bolts of the plan a little bit more. So again, this is, if I can find my cursor, here we go. This is starting out Fifty Third Street and going up to Shaw, Southwest Boulevard. I did want to pause here real quick, just to let you all know. One of the big things we were worried about, all, both advisory committees were about, the consultants were about, is making sure these plans matched up where they met. Obviously, we didn't want one plan to say, hey, Merriam Drive should be a six-lane cross-section. And then the other consultant say, well, it should be a two-lane cross-section where they meet. Obviously, that would not work and that wouldn't look like good government. So we worked very hard at that. I will give credit to the consultant group, both consultant groups. Merriam Drive Connected was Olson, Downtown Merriam was Confluence. They did a great job communicating back and forth and making sure that the plans met up. So really, the first thing to know then is, so when the, where the plans meet up, both plans recommend for Merriam Drive, a three-lane cross-section. So north-south and then a middle turn lane with a multi-use path on the east side, excuse me, west side and then sidewalks on the east side. So that's exactly what this plan recommends. The red here is a three-lane cross-section as it continues all the way up to the intersection of Antioch and Merriam Drive, which I will cover in just a second because that's probably the most exciting part of it for, for the city of Merriam. And then as you continue into Overland Park, which is right here, it recommends a two-lane road with bike lanes. And then as it gets back into this area, again, if you remember, this is the most heavily trafficked area of it. Goes back to a three-lane cross-section and then from there on, all the light blue is, again, a two-lane cross-section with bike paths. For those who are familiar with the corridor, this is right where it goes, turns over into the Unified Government. And that's existing, they've recently just redone that area. So that is the existing configuration of that street at this location. So again, a little bit of the details of it. Again, here is the pedestrian, pedestrian bike path recommendations for it. I won't go through it in detail because I just did. But again, showing also some sidewalk connections as it goes into the corridor area and how the, you know, bike pedestrian facility should be throughout there. So this is probably the most interesting part of it, of, of it for the city of Merriam. This is the intersection of Antioch Drive and Merriam Drive. I will say that the consultants team, they had, they looked at this hard. Traffic engineers looked at this hard. They really did take a hard, critical look at this. They took all the data, came up with suggestions and ideas, they vetted a number of different ideas. So this has been, been, been looked at in detail. It still needs to be looked at in even more detail if it goes to a design phase. But I just wanted folks, everybody to understand that this wasn't something that was off the cuff or perhaps not vetted completely. I do want to point out, again, as I mentioned earlier, they do use existing land use plans. So this over here is South Park. So north is up, I apologize, so north is up. So this is South Park over here. This comes directly from your South Park SubArea Plan, showing the existing school being repurposed and then some live-work facilities here and then some connected housing over here. So again, example, they pulled that right out of the South, South Park Plan. But what it shows is, and this is the technical term they used, it shows a peanut intersection for where Merriam Drive and Antioch connect. What this does is it gives full access to, folks can make it every, full access to all directions here. As you all are very familiar with, as we're all familiar with, currently, if you're northbound on Antioch Road and you want to go down Merriam Drive, go back south and west, you have to take the cut through of Fiftieth Terrace right here. Now, the other plan, it's in the other plan, the Merriam, Downtown Merriam Drive Plan. This intersection right here at Fiftieth Terrace and Merriam Drive, for the small amount of traffic, they had had the third highest number of wrecks on the corridor. Excuse me, on the corridor from Antioch Drive to south. So it was a very, well, again, low number of vehicles, a lot of, lot of wrecks. You all have been through it, you know that if you're west, westbound trying to look northbound, topographical problem. You really have a difficult time seeing the vehicles there that are southbound on there. So what this plan recommends is the peanut to give full access. So you can come northbound and you can get all the way around and go back to the south and west. And then making this a one-way, a one-way eastbound road right here. Still maintain access for the business here and there's an alleyway through here. So that is the recommendation for it. And I'll go here, this is a little bit closer, closer look at it. So this is, down here in the right-hand corner would be the northwest. So it's the pink pagoda, even though it's not pink anymore, but we all still love and we call it the pink pagoda. So this is the pink pagoda here. Over here is Grandstand Hamburgers. Over here is Rauku. And then this is where the used car, used van place is at. So this is showing how the, how the intersection would work. So again, full access, so Antioch Drive is here in the middle, this is Merriam Drive here. So you can make any turning movement you want, want. If you're wanting to go northbound on Antioch, to go back south and west, you can make that movement. It also shows the multi-use path being on the west side of Merriam Drive, crossing over and continuing on down the west side of Antioch Drive. It shows a great ability to make this an entry feature. Monuments here can really define the area and let people, folks know where they are at. So, so great opportunities for here. I, the reason I wanted to bring this up is obviously it's a big thing for the city of Merriam. But Overland Park has already contacted staff, asking us if we, if the city wants to move forward with design study of this. Obviously, as I mentioned, the, looked at it really hard, but there's really a need to get into, you know, all the topography happening there and all the right-of-way and all the really nitty-gritty. So Overland Park is already looking, is already considering moving forward with doing, starting an initial design. uh, starting an initial design on this in twenty twenty-three. So, um, so it is something that, if, if we approve, if the council approves this this evening, we will be on the road for something like this. So, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that, that, the, the ball is rolling already on this project, on this, this concept and idea, so. And then, again, just going back to using the South Park area plan as the consultants designed this area, Marion Drive is up here and is, is back in the background as it curves up here, and then Antioch is clear here. So, this is how the South Park planned, so here's West Fiftieth Terrace, you can kinda see how it turns into a one-way up here. So, this is, again, using from the South Park subarea plan, um, for, for, um, creating design of this area. So, one more slide, oops, sorry, and then I'm gonna stop and take a breath, take some water, and let you all ask, ask me questions of that. Um, this is, uh, some of, just one page, there's a number of pages in there in regards to monumentation and things like that, that have suggested and ideas. So, this is, if you look back at this, you can see the monumentation in the middle of the peanut, and this is some of the suggestions for it. So, um, with that, um, I'd be happy to take any questions on this part of it before I move on.
What was the date of the South Park plan? I do remember the process, but I don't remember the date.
I wanna believe it was adopted, um, in two thousand and seven and eight.
Okay, makes sense.
And it still is, it's interesting, if you ever dig it up, it's still a very relevant plan. It really is, that is not redeveloped, still has lots of area over there, still has some great ideas and concepts that are still very germane to, to now, to, to the current, to the now, so it really was, it's a cool plan.
Can you share that, since I wasn't on council in two thousand and seven?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I, I need to look and see.
But I was.
I know, you're the only one, so.
I can, I will do that, I will look and see actually if that's on our, um, if that's on our website. I will make sure. Okay, we can definitely get that up.
Mr. Nell, go ahead.
Yeah, you just mentioned, uh, you're stopping, uh, and you're gonna continue on, um, you're just taking questions on the Marion corridor, or are you taking questions on the other?
If there are any other questions, or if you have a questions on the Marion Corridor Connected Plan, but if you want, I can keep going, cause.
Yeah, I have some questions on, uh, basically, I have a conceptual question first, which kinda applies to both of them, and then I have some specific questions. Um, one, these plan, kinda, statutorily, the planning, you know, the planning process requires, you know, a, a land use plan, and, and some, um, you know, we just did the twenty forty, you know, look forward, and, so what does that essentially commit this, you know, the city to, in terms of, um, the property owners in the area? Uh, you know, we have a, a, a planning document, and there's probably different levels of planning documents. You alluded to that at the beginning, and I'm just trying to understand how much, um, you know, uh, the adoption tonight, what does that actually do?
Sure. Well, uh, let's go talk about the land use plans, and kinda the way I like to talk about these things is the, you know, we have the comprehensive plan, twenty forty plan, it's kinda the thirty-thousand-foot view of, of what we see the future of Marion to be like. Um, within that plan, it does have some recommended land uses in it. Um, you, you should know, as, I know you all are very familiar, how does that go into how you all govern and, and stuff like that? Well, really, the big part is, is when you all look at rezoning actions, there's the golden factors in there, and the golden factors have a number of questions in there, and one of the questions is, are, does this rezoning comply with your comprehensive plan? Now, um, the thing to know about the golden factors is just cause you say yes, or just cause you say no to one of them, doesn't mean the whole, the whole thing should be, um, denied, or anything like that. It's just questions and tests that, um, the Kansas Supreme Court, uh, came up with, with a very important case a number of years ago, that we actually codified, that's actually in our code, that we must go through. So, um, the, the comprehensive land use plans, whether they be the comprehensive plan twenty forty, or these more specific, um, plans such as the, um, oh, the, um, Shawnee Mission Parkway and Antioch, uh, plan, or the, um, South Park Subarea Plan, uh, those are really important to land you, landowners, is cause it gives them an idea of what the city's future thought process is for, for perhaps their property. Now, doesn't guarantee anything, cause again, um, it's, it's a land use plan, so it, it doesn't guarantee that that's gonna happen, but it gives folks an idea for how their, um, the future land uses of their property would be. Now, these two plans go into much more detail, much more specific about it. Uh, again, as I mentioned, they aren't land use plans specifically for Marion, they're more of cross-sections of, hey, the street should be three lanes, it should be this, it should be that, sidewalk should be here, should be there, um, and so, how does that affect a property owner? Well, a plan, something like, something like this, if you're a property owner in any of these corners, I would think you'd be, have some interest into what goes on in the future, and how that's gonna affect them. So, um, uh, obviously, uh, probably gonna have more of effect perhaps on the Overland Park side than our side, but, um, this is something to give them some interest into what might be happening with them, and, but the specifics as to what would happen, won't come out until, as you all are familiar with, when we do the actual design, and say, okay, the right-of-way is here, the right-of-way is there, we're gonna need to acquire this much of your property, or and stuff like that. So, um, i- in regards to how much it can, what it commits the city to do, um, i- i- it doesn't commit us to do, it, more of us gives folks a signal of what we're planning to do, and so, it doesn't necessarily commit it, if you all adopted this, it doesn't commit us to doing this at all. Um, it just indicates that this is the direction going, this is what we're planning to do, so folks shouldn't be surprised when we enter into an agreement with Overland Park to start the actual design process for it.
Excuse me, um, okay, that, that was helpful, eh, these sub-plans, or this, what you, you mentioned was a transportation, these two are primarily transportation plans? Okay, when we get to, I guess, are you gonna present on the, uh, downtown Marion plan? I'll have some questions after that, although I'm, one question that might be associated with this plan, I don't know, is there gonna be, in, in this planning, is there any connection between the Turkey Creek Trail and, uh, across the, the way, um, in Overland Park? Right now, we have the interstate, um, and I didn't see specifically, so, for sure, whether there was a connection.
Sure, so this is, so this is Antioch right here, this is the active transportation recommendations, this is Turkey Creek Trail that's not accessible right now, because it has the slide, and, um, it is still, per this, I can't, I think it says closed. I, um, would not anticipate that this is going to be open anytime soon. Um, I think the desire in trying to make Marion Drive a major corridor through there for pedestrians, um, I think that's the focus for, for, for Overland Park at this point in time.
So, basically, what you're saying is that, uh, this will somewhat replace that trail in some, some way in, in the Overland Park?
I, I'm not gonna speak for Overland Park, but I do think that's a pretty good, uh, idea, yeah, thought process, yes. At this point in time, now, that's not to say, you know, they perhaps will go some, have a change of heart at some point in time, but yeah, that, uh, slough over there, it's a, um, just to fix it, I think, would be overly expensive, and then there's no guarantee, once they fix it, it's not gonna turn around and do it right again, so.
Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Brian, can you go back to the peanut? Um, I'm really excited to hear that Overland Park is already kind of engaged to start a design process with that. I drive through that every day, and my office is on Marion Drive, so this is all very exciting to me. Um, what, and this is very, probably, but like, timing, like, is there any idea of like, how long design would take for an, a, a very important intersection like this?
Uh, you know, um, I, I think, um, they're, when, when they reached out to us, it was, you know, kinda the initial design of it, um, you know, I would guess that would probably be a year-long process for design of it, and then probably a pretty significant process for acquisition of it, um, you know, two, five years maybe, that would certainly be.
That's what I was thinking, five, so, that's what, thank you.
Mr. Silver.
Uh, so I have a question about this image itself, and I know this isn't the exact image, uh, but it's something that I brought up in earlier conversations, and that is, for people who haven't attended the meetings that we've all attended, um, I feel like this image is really scary, because if you're not fully informed on what's going on here, it looks like we're also assuming that we're gonna be greatly incre- increasing the traffic that's gonna be go- going up and down Marion, and down Marion Lane, um, Marion Drive. Um, the other thing I had an issue with was, we're talking about walkability and bikability and, and drivability, but we, we don't show how the bike lanes transition, uh, from Marion Drive to Marion Lane. Um, so, mine is more of a concern.
Well, this, it's the multi-use path.
Right, but we don't show that, and so what I'm, my concern is.
It's right here.
What I'm saying is we don't show, we show a ton of, we show a ton of cars, we don't show bikes.
Oh, I see, you don't have a graphic, you don't, okay, I understand.
And so, my concern is, uh, as council, when and if we approve this, we're gonna have to, we'll probably be fielding some questions about increased traffic and things like that, and so, from early on, I mentioned that I thought that this image was deceiving, and I'm just wondering if there's a way that it can be, when we get further along, when we have to actually vote on this, and, and have it, um, I mean, it's up on the website now, can it be more true to what we're selling, what we're buying, what we're?
Yeah, that's an excellent point, I understand. I, I think they put all the cars on there to show that it could handle all those cars, um, but that, that's a great point, and I think, eh, if, if there's a decision to go forward with the design process, I do understand that better graphics to show that would be useful, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Ms. Ryder.
Um, are we going to have a crosswalk si- like, signal and stuff for people trying to get across there?
Uh, most likely not, these usually typically don't. They typically are, um, just simply with crossing lanes, as, as shown there with the crosswalks.
Okay, any other questions for Director Dyer before we moves on to downtown?
Well, downtown, I'll be a little bit briefer with that, uh, you've already seen this plan, you have already suggested and utilized this plan for the city moving forward with it, um, and that kinda feeds into my first comment about this, that this plan is, has a short-term and long-term vision for the design of Marion Drive, um, and the consultants really worked hard to make sure that the short-term vision and thoughts and recommendations worked well with the long-term thoughts. Um, so, uh, the long-term, uh, vision really comes out of your Marion twenty forty comprehensive plan, and as, as you all know, there's some, there's a cool graphic in there showing kinda vision of how, uh, Marion, downtown Marion could evolve. Um, I will say that, um, this plan was about ninety-seven percent completed, when we found out that the Congress had allocated funding for the core project, so it's obviously had a big effect on, on everything, um, but, um, we think that this still speaks well to downtown, even with the core project. Actually, some information in this plan that the Corps of Engineers is utilizing themselves, um, but I, I would say that the Corps of Engineer plans could make that twenty-year vision on a short, shorter timeframe, could be a much, you know, ten-year vision, fifteen years, so it could happen in a shorter timeframe. So, um, with that, uh, this is what I talked about, um, this is something that, uh, staff, consultants were looking at, eh, with the idea that perhaps the core project was never gonna happen. So, um, thought was to, this is, uh, Marion Drive right here, um, train tracks are over here, Turkey Creek's rolling winding over here, so the blue part is the floodplain, here is, um, farm, uh, Farmer's Market, was it taken area out of the, taken area, the next to Turkey Creek can turn into a water feature, turned into, um, a detention area, how, what kind of effect would that have on the floodplain? So, if you go all the way here to the right, uh, in the area in red, the area that's green would be removed out of the floodplain, and that represents about twelve acres that would come out of the floodplain. So, um, again, we were working on this with the thought process that the core project may not happen. So, this is information that BHC actually, BHC vetted out, and has provided the technical data to the Corps of Engineers as they go through their process of looking at what is the best design for, um, Turkey Creek mitigation. So, um, this is the one part of the information I was talking about earlier, showing the different levels of traffic, um, this is the average daily traffic on the Marion Corridor, Marion Drive Corridor, about eight thousand vehicles. It's about when you get to ten thousand vehicles, where two-lane road starts becoming a little, a little iffy, and then for sure, when it gets to eighteen thousand vehicles up here, um, that's when you need to go to a three, a three-lane cross-section, again, two, uh, lanes through, and then one turn lane in the middle. There's also, if you get on, if you get on, um, looking at this page, a lot of great information about, um, how the Marion Drive will perform, um, and, and some pretty good information, again, technical information about the flow of traffic. This is the graphic, and again, I'm not gonna belay on it, this is the graphic showing that, uh, uh, Fiftieth Terrace was the third highest number of crashes along the corridor, that's the top bar graph there. Um, I put this in, cause I thought it was a great example of how, uh, the committee, um, the, the design team, the Con- Confluence worked with, uh, heard concerns from property owners in the area. This is, uh, Fifty-seventh Street right here, here's Fifty-seven oh one, here's, uh, Farmer's Market. These business owners here were concerned about getting sure they were able to get their large truck traffic in there and deliveries there. The original design is turned, uh, Marion Drive into a two-lane cross-section all the way through here, up to the bridge, um, realizing that, uh, that wouldn't work for the turning movement for large trucks, the, the committee and the con- consultants went back and looked at it, came up with a revised plan, making it a three-lane cross-section starting in this location, then also, uh, putting some additional parking, parallel parking along Marion Drive in front of, um, the, the old Irene French facility, so that really increased, did a number of great things, but increased the ability for trucks to make the turning traffic, that's what, all those squiggly lines are in there, those are truck turning templates, and then also increased the parking for the area, which in turn increased the ability to do, uh, car shows on the hard surfaces, do food trucks down here, and just increase the ability to have, uh, keep, to make Marion Drive, it's already very active, but make it even more so. Um, so the next one, this is, you've already, you've seen this before, this is kinda going through the different sections of Marion Drive, and how it changes through there, again, just hitting the high points along here, uh, showing additional parking, uh, diagonal parking along property that the city owns, so again, Fifty-seven oh one, as well as Farmer's Market, which is located right here, showing the, um, where the shared-use bike lane, excuse me, the shared-use path starts, the ten-to-twelve-foot path starts right here on the west side of Marion Drive, and continues all the way up Marion Drive, showing relocating the entryway into Farmer's Market to the north, we've talked about that, great for, um, better control of traffic flow around Farmer's Market when there's things going on in there, and then also gives the ability to use the old entryway as more of a plaza gathering seating place for that. Um, going a little bit further to the, to the south, uh, as we get into de- downtown Marion proper, goes to a two-lane cross-section for the most areas, still has on-street parallel parking, has crosswalks, a little, some traffic coming through there, so traffic will be slower, has sharrows for showing that it is a bike route. Um, this also, uh, was a little bit of a conundrum from the consultants, because there was a lot of sidewalk there, but not enough sidewalk to do a shared-use lane, uh, bike path, but they wanted also for the sidewalk to be available for folks to do on, on, you know, like, on, on sidewalk eating and things like that. So, um, that was kinda the, why the decision was made in the multi-use path here, just in south of the Farmer's Market, folks can still have the option of riding their bikes on the, on the, on the sidewalk there, or the more, um, comfortable users, more experienced users with bikes can head out onto the street and use the street on the sharrows. Then finally, um, down here, uh, significant entryway feature into downtown Marion, which is this right here. Um, this also shows all the different, uh, streetscape, uh, proposals, uh, again, uh, over-the-street lighting, uh, benches, uh, bike, um, facilities, uh, these are, this is all information that you all looked at and have recommended, and the consultants are using right now as they're designing, uh, Marion Drive. So, um, again, just a little bit more about, about the ultimate look and desire for what, what we're looking at. Here's the entry feature for Marion Drive, um, some representation of some of the sidewalk treatment that, that we'll be looking at, um, again, uh, raised crosswalks potentially, um, across Marion Drive, uh, so that is the immediate, that's what's being done right now, that you all will see when, uh, consultants come back with the recommendations for Marion Drive design, uh, so, again, a couple months ago, you all looked at that and directed us to start utilizing this, so that's the here and the now, and then here is, back to that, uh, twenty-year vision, that twenty forty vision, uh, again, Marion, um, this is kinda the detention area, uh, for Turkey Creek, here is, um, Farmer's Market, and this kinda speaks to what I talked about, wanting to utilize what we do today still in the future, um, this shows Marion Drive being realigned, the bridge being realigned, just let you know, um, when we did a walk-through with the Corps of Engineers, they all, to a person, was like, hey, that bridge is a big problem, you know, it really constricts stuff, so, uh, So, this is something that they're like, what, they're already talking about wanting to realign the bridge, and we're like, well, guess what? We have a plan for that. So, this shows realigning the bridge, that brings up Marion Drive up to Kessler, swings it around, and brings it back to Marion Drive. Again, this is what you all have seen as part of the 2040 plan. And it just shows that this would be what we do now in Marion Drive, but it'd still be utilized. It'd still be used as a promenade, it'd still be used as a walkway, still be utilized for festivals and things like that. So, stuff that we do today would not be dug up as we, you know, re-envisioned downtown into the next 20 years. So, I will, in my presentation, is saying that both of the advisory committees, kind of by consensus, recommended that the city council adopt these, adopt both these plans. So, that ends my presentation. I'm sure I'll be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Mr. Neal.
Okay. Kind of getting back to the very first question about the use of these planning documents and our approval of them and what that actually means. Concept one and concept two in the downtown Marion Corridor plan are significantly different. And one of the two plans is essentially leaving most of the current businesses intact and the street in the same position it is now. And the other is, as you're showing there, a significantly different plan, which is in the 2040 plan, but is also going to essentially clearly require the removal of a number of the existing businesses. And so, my question is, by adopting a plan that has concept one and concept two, with concept two being, from my reading of it, the, it appears to be the favored plan, because it's, 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 most of the document talks about that particular concept. What are we committing ourselves to by passing, by approving that plan in regards to the current owners of the property that exists there? Because I'm always concerned about existing property owners and how they're affected by the things that we do.
Well, concept one and concept two, let's be clear, concept one is a short-range, five, 10, 15-year plan. Concept two is long-range, so it's not an either-or process. It's the thought process that's over time, as downtown Marion progresses, how it changes and evolves. It goes from one to ultimately perhaps two. So, it's not an either-or, it's kind of a progression. So, the reason we have concept one and concept two, because again, as I talked about, concept one is like, hey, we know we're going to be redesigning Marion Drive in 2020, 2022, and 2023. What is the best configuration for Marion Drive today? So, that's kind of concept one, and that's why we did it that way. And then, concept two is, we in our 2040 plan have this vision of downtown Marion. So, what you see up there, that is out of the 2040 plan. So, we have a vision of downtown Marion. How can, what we do in the first thing, concept one, how does that fit with concept two? How can we make sure that, as I mentioned, what we do now isn't something we're tearing up 10, 15 years from now, and we can still utilize? So, so that's kind of, that's, that's the kind of why there's two different plans. I don't want to say different, there's two different time points, points of time that the plan is looking at. So, in regards to, you know, how does this affect property owners? Again, this is something that will be, as our development's done, private property owner-driven. So, this would take private property owners wanting to participate in this, wanting to do this. As you all are familiar, we cannot do condemnation for economic development unless the state legislature approves it. So, well, so that's not something we're going to be able to do. So, this is really, again, property owner, developer-driven. This is aspirational for downtown, so if, how it affects property owners, this could, they will have to participate and actively want to buy or develop or do whatever with their property.
Okay, so, I appreciate that, that clarification. I, it seems to me that with the Upper Turkey Creek project, with Core moving forward, that some of that long-distance view or long-horizon view might very significantly be impacted. And so, we would be probably making changes or making, in other words, the ultimate vision may need to be decided on and moved in a more strenuous direction sooner rather than later as a result of the new information and new project. Since this one is so significant in terms of changing the landscape with private property owners, and you get into the whole issue of condemnation and things like that, which I know that has been a difficult subject in the past in Marion. Is it possible that when we have a better idea of the, you know, the work that the Corps is doing, that we might want to revisit this plan? And if we, are we, is, is there some constraint that we wouldn't be able to redo this plan fairly quickly as a result of the possible input from the Corps?
Right. I would say from a staff perspective, we fully expect, once the Corps comes up with their plans in stone, we'll definitely be looking at how that affects these plans. And if there's a need for change, we will definitely be revising those plans, so, yeah. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we were 97% done with these plans when the Corps, when the Congress announced that they had funded, gave funding to the Corps project. So, do I think that would have had a substantial change to this? No, I really don't. But, I do think it would have changed maybe our thought processes to the timeline, because as I mentioned earlier, that's when I started this, staff would agree that the Corps' project, if it goes forward, and if it goes forward in a manner that's conducive to this, will probably accelerate this type of redevelopment.
I have one last question. Have we done any kind of more broad polling of the residents and the business owners regarding concept one and concept two in its shorter-time horizon?
Sure. No, but what I would say, we have not, but what I would say is, again, going back to the Marion Comprehensive Plan 2040, there was a lot of polling, we did, I actually did a survey with that, statistically, a survey with that. And one of the things that came out of that was the residents' desire for downtown Marion to continue to evolve over time and to become something that perhaps would be more pedestrian-oriented, and more, you know, more of things that people can go down and do and participate in. So, that was not, doesn't speak exactly to what your question is. There is, we have done survey and questions about this, and this is something that, you know, the majority of residents seem to want downtown to move towards.
Thank you.
Also, keep in mind, these are both public processes that all the business owners downtown were involved in. So, this shouldn't be a surprise to any private property owners downtown.
I'm just saying that if something that is, 2040 is a long ways away in a lot of people's minds, and then if it becomes, you know, 2027, then, you know, they might have a more immediate attention, they focus on it. So, I'm just, that's all I was saying.
Other questions for Director Dyer? I see, no additional questions for Director Dyer. I assume at this point, we would, thank you, thank you, Director Dyer. Entertained a motion, it looks like as far as the direction of our motions, we would talk about the downtown one first. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
Yes, by golly, you did.
Downtown Marion Corridor plan is, Ms. Hands, I would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council adopt the downtown Marion Drive Corridor as the design document for Marion Drive Corridor from Johnson Drive to West 53rd Street.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I see a second? Oh. The motion was, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
This one. We have, we have a motion. Ms. Ryder.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
I'm going to vote aye, but I would like to see, before we actually, I'd like to see a willingness to re-look at this after the Corps has come up with some of their information.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, I would entertain a motion for the other portion of this corridor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopt the Marion Connected Corridor Plan as the design document for Marion Drive from West 53rd Street to Antioch Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, Ms. Chaveta, go ahead.
I'll second, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, it looks like our next item might be the finance report. Staff, Director Oliver is going to come forward.
A copy of the finance report, of course, is included in your packet. In summary, we continue to see really good, is it not?
You did, okay.
We continue to have good sales tax numbers. Again, we know that's all tied to the economy, and we hope that continues. We continue to be right at where we would anticipate with expenditures and foresee that we will be, you know, under budget on our expenditures, which is exactly where we should, should be. So, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about it tonight.
Does anyone have any questions, Director Oliver? Looks like you're doing such a good job, no one has questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other staff items? Ms. Ringel.
The only item that I have is this weekend is Marion Drive Live from 2:00 till 8:00 at the Marion Marketplace. Weather looks like it's going to be fantastic. There's going to be good vendors, good bands. We're still looking for some volunteers. If anybody's interested in volunteering, please reach out to Renee. If you're not interested in volunteering, please come out and enjoy the event. Be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any additional questions for Ms. Ringel? I see no additional questions. Looks like we have an executive session. And you were requesting what you think an hour would be appropriate? You tell us what you need and we'll.
Well, seeing how, seeing how if we say an hour and it's only 30 minutes, we got to stay up there for an hour, I would suggest 30 minutes and then be prepared for someone to come down and make a request for another 15, 30 minutes. I would say just 30 minutes, because, yeah, if you guys say an hour and it's only 30 minutes, we're on.
I understand you'll be fast, that doesn't mean we'll be fast. Okay, and I would also like to be sure we have a little time for a break before we start.
Before we start.
So.
I would entertain a motion.
I would make that motion.
Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council recess into executive session for preliminary discussion on acquisition of real property as justified by KSA 7543 19B6, which allows the city council to recess into executive session for preliminary discussion for the acquisition of real property. President will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and community development director. The meeting will convene in the council chambers at 9:15.
Okay, we have a motion. I have a second. Ms. Silver.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
I'll entertain a.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council recess into executive session. Do I need to read the whole thing? As stated before.
As previously stated, yes.
Okay, as previously stated, and that we will reconvene in chambers at 9:35.
Okay, I'll need a second.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
All in favor.
Madam Clerk, wait a minute, sorry.
That's fine, we can do an all in favor.
Whatever you want to do, you're in charge, I'm sorry.
All in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. We'll reconvene the meeting, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Oh, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
I second.
Okay, just one here, seconds?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.